Yes, it is by my watches.
Yeah, let's go.
It's 6:50.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to have a special meeting at 6:50. Will you all stand for the pledge, please?
My ladies and gentlemen.
Good flag. Help the United States of America. And Supreme Court for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excuse me. Would everybody remain standing? I want a moment of silence for retired chief William Donegan. The West Shore Fire Department passed away. And I want a moment of silence of the two officers that got killed in the line of duty in Bristol. Thank you. And clerk will take roll call.
Councilman Gary Donovan.
Councilman Gary Donovan, councilman-at-large present.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor.
Councilwoman Colleen O'Connor, council-at-large here.
Councilman Ronald Quagliani.
Ronald Quagliani, council-at-large present.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky.
Councilwoman Bridget Hosky, first district present.
Councilwoman Melly Garthwait is absent. Councilwoman Sarah Acbarali is absent. Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano.
Councilman Mitchell Gallagnano, fourth district present.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton.
Councilwoman Robin Wat Hamilton, fifth district here.
Councilwoman Catherine Tucker is currently absent. Councilman Victor Boris.
Councilman Victor Boris, fifth district present.
Councilman Robert Bruno.
Councilman Robert Bruno, ninth district present.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone.
Councilman Stephen Johnstone, tenth district present.
And chairman Peter Mazzaro.
Chairman Peter Mazzaro is present.
And we have a quorum, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I'll turn the meeting over to Councilman Gary Donovan.
Thank you, Chairman. It is now 6:52. We're going to have a public hearing on Communication E from Lee Ternan Corporation Council. Request approval to construct a new promenade to be located at Sixth Rock Street, to be paid for by the new developer of Sixth Rock Street in accordance with City Code Section 206-2. Does anyone from the public like to speak on this matter? For a second time, does anyone like to speak on this matter? Yes.
Good evening. Andy Weinstein, 20 Platt Avenue. This was brought up at the last council meeting, the moving of the promenade. And there were council people here who did not understand why it was brought up at this point. I think we should wait until appeals are done so that we know we have a brewery coming in. And I think we need to be careful. There are bikes, and rollerbladers, and wheelchairs, and handicap people. And we're proposing an area that turns at a pretty sharp angle. So there's potential danger for our citizens by doing this. And that's my comment on that. I have other comments later this evening.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter?
You need my name?
Yes, please.
Rich Hebert, 166 Bloom Street. In regards to the proposed changing of the walkway in front of the building, I'm surprised that you didn't have a big map up here showing that, like you did with the building. We had a one side of the building, looks very nice, but there's no relationship to the surrounding area that was presented. Would you show the people the actual dimensions of the building, the encroachment, and their proposed new walkway? I think it's very important that the public actually sees it, because it's not a minor change, it's a drastic change.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? For a second time, does anyone else from the public like to speak on this matter? For a third and final time, does anyone like to speak on this matter? Seeing none, public session, public hearing on this matter is closed. The time is now 6:55.
Thank you, Councilman Donovan.
We're going to be in recess till seven.
Yes, recess until seven.
We have another year of this administration. Things in this town are not going well. I don't quite care about the ninety thousand dollar salary. But I think going another year without leadership will have dire consequences for this city. Economic development in this town is critical to taxes not going up. The initial proposed five-year budget showed over a ten percent increase in taxes. I've expressed my desire to be on the Economic Development Commission for several years. I was asked last week by the chairperson of that committee, Christine Dallow, to be on the committee. We met for an hour and a half last week. As all of you know, I submitted my resume and ethics forms. But I've been told by people in this administration that it has to be approved by the mayor and that there's no telling whether that will happen or not. There are other people who have also, just in the last week, applied for this this commission, this board. Brian Zahn wrote an article about this just last month, about all the vacancies on the boards and commissions in this town and the mayor's lack of attention to it. This is another item that hurts the taxpayers when we have a mayor who is checked out.
Mr. Weinstein.
Yes.
In regards to the live streaming.
Yes, sir.
Like I explained to you last time, and I'll explain it again, my committee, my council budget does not have the money to pay him. I am not going to overspend my budget. But I worked very hard with a couple of council people, and we found a way to take care of this, and we are going to take care of this on our own.
Bravo.
Okay?
I appreciate it greatly, and I'm sure the residents of the city do as well.
Thank you.
When is that going to start?
Next meeting, if the council passes the transfer.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else like to address the council? Would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Third and final time, would anybody else like to come up and address the council? Public session is closed. Thank you. Public meeting will start at seven fourteen.
Eleven. Seven eleven.
Seven eleven.
Yeah, that's all.
That's good.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. I didn't hear you say, "Public session is over."
I just hit it. I did it.
No.
Yes, I did.
No.
Whoa.
She didn't hear you personally.
Oh, sorry about that, Margaret, but I did say it. I said it three times, and I said third and final time.
Your voice is very sore. You have to speak louder.
I'm sorry.
Can you give her three minutes?
Yes, if you want to come up, Margaret, I'll give you the three minutes.
So, public information is not closed yet.
Yeah.
Okay, Margaret A. Krizminski, One Road Bart Street, in the Allentown section of West Haven. I understand in today's Register, there was an article about West Haven, about giving money to the Public Works Department employees to clean out coverts and sewers in the street. What's that? Are we going to be bribing people to do their job? There's not enough in their paycheck? What is that? I want to know, with their union contract, what's their job? Is the driver who drives the truck, that I see, it's only his job to drive the truck? Does the employee that drives along with him, his job to get out of the truck? Why, the person who drives the truck only drives the truck? It's a two-man job? One drives, the other one gets out and does the work? Or do we have vacancies in the Public Works Department? Are they shorthanded? I know one gentleman just passed away because his funeral was this past Friday. What's going on? Mr. McCarthy should come forward and tell us here personally what's happening in the Public Works Department. Are we shorthanded? I don't know how many people work there in the Public Works Department. I'm sure if there's a problem, there's not enough money for the Public Works Department? Because everybody's complaining about things not being done. We don't have any funding to pave the roads, there's potholes in the road. What's going on with Public Works? We have twenty-nine million dollars that Mr. Carney is in charge of applying it to various projects. What's going on? I get to see Mr. Carney and his program on my iPad. Money is flying around all over the place. What's wrong with Public Works? I don't understand it. One of the employees passed away. The funeral was this past Friday. What is actually going on in West Haven? You know what? The first responders being designated with money. Bridgette, last council meeting, she's getting phone calls from people in need of things, food. We're the only community in the whole state of Connecticut that's giving money to, and the three fire departments for first responders. We are the only community in the whole state of Connecticut. I want to take that money away for those vests that you want to hand out and give it to her for the people who are calling up because they're in need of food. If we are the only community that's giving money for first responders that are not in need of those vests, then give it to her for the people who are calling up in need for food. It's outrageous out there what's going on with inflation. People are not in, they're in need of it. She can tell you that, and she said it two weeks ago. The phone calls that she's getting, we have to help the people in need. Thank you.
Thank you, Margaret. I think I go over again?
No, now it's closed.
Public session is now closed.
Seven seventeen.
Seven seventeen. Okay. Ready?
We're ready.
Approval is in a minute of the regular meeting for October eleventh.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Stayed?
Stayed.
Three percent.
Okay, okay.
Check.
Motion pass.
Motion passes.
And I will pass out the communications this evening, Mr. Chairman.
All right.
Communication A from the Task Collector regarding overpayment refunds for the October 2022, which will be assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. Communication B from Joseph Perno, Chief of Police of the West Haven Police Department, regarding animal shelter donations being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. Communication C from Peter Massaro, Chairman of the City Council, regarding a request for interdepartmental transfer of funds being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. Communication D from Joe Soto, Director of Emergency Management, regarding 2022 Emergency Management Department overdose program being assigned to the Finance Committee, Chairwoman Hosky. And Communication E from Lee Tierney, Corporation Council, requesting approval to construct a new promenade to be located at Sixth Rock Street, to be paid for by the new developer of Sixth Rock Street in accordance with the City Code Section 206-2, which is being assigned to the Public Lands Committee, Chairman Donovan. And that concludes our communications for this evening, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. And I'll turn it over to Councilwoman Hosky for finance.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now seven twenty. Tell me again, is that accurate?
You're good, seven nineteen.
Seven nineteen. Your committee, your Finance Committee is in session. Those present are Councilwoman Quagliani, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilwoman O'Connor, and myself, acting as chair.
An absent is Councilwoman Acbarali.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, an absent is Councilwoman Acbarali. We have before us, we're going to bring Communication D, but I don't think Joe Soto's not here. Is somebody in here?
Email late on that.
Oh, you're here for him? Oh, welcome. Excuse me? Oh, I thought you were saying something. Hi.
Motion to approve.
Good evening, council members. I'd like to bring this, thank you, I'm sorry. It threw me off when he wasn't here, and then, give me one second. So I'd like to bring this out favorably.
Motion.
Thank you, Councilwoman. We'll have discussion, if you can just give us your name. I don't think we know who you are, so welcome.
That's all right. Evening, council members. Chairman Massaro, my name is Olivia Basanti. I'm the new Assistant Grants Writer. So I'm here on behalf of Joe Soto. He's not here tonight, and I wrap a proposal outlining his overdose response program, and I can get into reading that for you guys now. The Grants and Aid Department has received a proposal from Emergency Management Director Joe Soto to implement a school-based opioid response program in our middle and high schools. Titled the 2022 Emergency Management Department Overdose Response Program, the requested funds will be used to purchase life-saving medication Narcan, as well as personnel training and a public awareness campaign. City of West Haven has received twenty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-two dollars in legal settlement funds concerning the opioid crisis. We are requesting nineteen thousand, four hundred and forty-six dollars of these funds to support the program. This will leave a balance of two thousand, eight hundred and six dollars remaining for future use to combat the opioid crisis. Narcan training in schools is an approved use of funds according to the legal settlement agreement, which I can go over with you guys in a little. Beginning with the advertisement campaign on opioid overdose prevention, electronic billboard advertisements will raise awareness while the school staff is trained. Training will include identifying signs of an opioid overdose, Narcan administration, and resuscitation using an Ambu bag. Upon training completion, each school will receive several boxes of Narcan, Ambu bags, and nasal med trainers. The Connecticut Department of Health reports that ninety-two percent of West Haven's one-hundred-and-seventy-eight overdoses in the last seven years were caused by opioids. Statewide, in fifty-five percent of opioid-related deaths, a potential bystander was present. By arming the schools with education and medication, we hope to create a community who is able and willing to perform life-saving actions at the time of an accidental overdose. If you will reference the budget proposal, it breaks down the cost. We also included a ten percent contingency adjustment. Just for note, anything that is not spent out of this entire budget, contingency included, will just return to the remaining balance, and for someone to use those funds, they will have to come back to the council, propose that to you all, and then it will be approved. I also included a note from Finance Director Dave Taylor, just explaining that the funds are already in our account, ready for expenditure, as well as the Munis account balance, which shows how much money is in the account, and that it is, again, ready for use. So I open for any questions.
Well, thank you for coming. It's really nice to meet you. How long have you been with West Haven? I wasn't aware, I'm sorry.
It's all right, three weeks.
Oh, whoa, okay. Welcome, welcome.
Well, it's Monday, so two.
Two, okay, nice. Well, congratulations.
Thanks.
Thank you. We're so happy to have you here. Did you want to go? So I have a couple of questions. I don't want to say I'm so interested in this program. It seems weird because it's fighting overdoses, but I am, whatever the word is, excited about it, that we're going to be, hopefully, on the front lines of fighting this, right? So, when you go into the schools, are you, are you going to be doing trainings for the staff, or is there going to be, say, curriculum-based activities to, you know, educate the kids more than just, hey, we're going to have like an opioid, opioid, opioid thing in the gym? Or like when everyone comes in for like a two-hour class? I guess, is it going to maybe be, say, and I know this is crazy, like, you can't graduate out of West Haven High School unless you take like a six weeks of this class? You know, kind of like do eight hours of drug stuff with the DMV? I don't know. But I don't know what my question was, but is it going to be more than just the teachers? Like, are we going to be combating it with the kids somehow?
To my knowledge, the staff is going to be formally trained and certified in Narcan administration.
Okay.
I don't have any information at this point about student involvement, other than the public awareness campaign, which is going to be on the billboards, so that's kind of more widespread, but I can get back to you. I'll follow up with Joseph.
Because I just think that that's so key, right? Trying to figure out, and, you know, I'm going to be a little risky. I remember back when I was in junior high, that's when they rolled out sex education, and it was like, oh, my gosh, you know? Parents go into PTA meetings, fighting in the Board of Ed. What age is the right age, right? Well, I don't know what the answer is to any of that, but I'm just wondering, would we see a benefit of starting to try to educate our kids on the dangers of, you know, we do driving drunk, you know, there's SAD and Students Against Drunk Driving, I'm just, mother, right? Well, I'm just saying, like, at the high school, they had the SAD program, and I'm just wondering if there's other ways to do the education. And my other question is, is there an expiration date? Like, how long do these? Oh, thank you for the answer.
There is an expiration.
So, when we buy these, are we buying twenty-four cases now, and are they good for a year, or do we? Because then what do we do when they expire?
So, my knowledge of Narcan, I used to work, actually, with the homeless population, and I'm trained in Narcan, so this is personal anecdote, but Narcan is good shelf life in good conditions for about thirty-six months. They just changed it. It used to be twenty-four, believe it's thirty-six now. However, we are expecting to get more settlement funds in on a rolling basis. I don't know exactly when we'll get those, but I will follow up with you guys, and I'm sure there is funds left over, and that's definitely something that we can consider, just funding it and recertifying as new teachers come in, of course, that would be important.
Okay, I have one more question. And the billboards, so are there going to be the billboards on the highway? Are there going to be the billboards over near Duchess? Or you haven't decided, but when you think of billboards, it's going to be, is it that type thing?
To my knowledge, all I had was electronic billboards, but I will speak with Joseph when he gets back, and then I can update you on that.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm just curious.
Thank you.
Councilman.
No, you did a good job.
Thanks.
I took all your questions.
Yeah, so, thank you for bringing this to our attention, and for how you're going to use the grant. So, I think right now that we probably have little or no opportunity to have Narcan deployed in the school system, I think, prior to this grant. So, I mean, as you know, you've worked with the population, right? So seconds, seconds mean lives, right?
Yes.
So to be able to have Narcan available and people trained to utilize it and get people that were clinically really dead back to life because of it is a wonderful opportunity. We use it, you know, at my university, we've deployed it in the community where people were not breathing and, you know, helped them, so I think it's a valuable tool to have. So, that said, as far as the Board of Ed side of the House, they've bought into the program about training the staff and the teachers and how they would deploy Narcan in case an incident took place. I mean, we read all the time about, you know, what's inadvertently taken to our schools, right? So whether it be edibles, you know, or whether it be, you know, there's just a, an alert came out today about, you know, the Halloween candies, how, you know, the nerds and the Skittles, how potentially they could be cross-contaminated with fentanyl and things like that. So those are all the things that, you know, typically, it's not intentional, it's accidental overdose that we have to treat in the school system. So, I think it'll be helpful, I'm not going to put you on the spot, so it'd be helpful, I think, I'm a hundred percent in favor of how you're going to use this money. Even if we had a follow-up email from Joe and/or the Board of Ed combined as to what the program's going to look like, because I know I'm curious, I know Councilwoman Hosky's curious, I'm sure others are, you know, how, what's the program going to look like? So we're aware of it, and we could, we could spread the word.
Okay, that sounds good. I will make sure you get that follow-up.
Thank you.
I had one question about the training. Is there a specific number of people that can be trained? Or, I don't know how many teachers we have, so can four hundred people be trained, or only five people can be trained and then have to?
You know, I'm not sure. I believe it would probably, you know, I'm not going to try and speculate, I'll just let Joe update me, and then he will talk to you guys about that, because I don't know the specifics of who's training them on this.
All right, thank you for being honest.
Yeah, of course.
That was it.
Just a question. What about, is this only for the schools, or about, how about the homeless overdoses out in the streets and the bullwork? And what is the, what is the, who gets, like, who has bigger, how many overdoses versus the schools versus the homeless? Like, how many, like, do you got a figure on that?
I don't. This specifically will be for schools, middle and high schools specifically. I don't have a figure on that for this area, really, but to my knowledge, it should bring you some comfort that I do know local nonprofits, their staff who are out working with the population carry Narcan with them.
First responders.
Yes.
Fire service does also.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so all our first responders have it. It's just, and I don't want to speak out, I guess you would imagine, like, in the school, the first responder would be the teacher or the security guard going in and maybe finding, and you don't have those, that time, you know, maybe to wait, so they would administer it before the police or fire department got there.
That is the goal, I believe, just to be proactive and make sure it's as close as possible.
Are you all set, Councilman? I, so, I just have one more thing, because I would just be very interested, and I know I already mentioned it, and I know that it's only twenty-two thousand total that we have, but if there's other money out there to start some type of education system in the school, right? You know, to lose a friend to an opioid, opioid overdose is probably an alarming wake-up call to a sixteen- or seventeen-year-old, but, not but, period. It would just be devastating. I've not had that happen, my children, you know, not encountered that. I'm just wondering if there's a way to partner with the Board of Ed to try to do some type of education, you know, be proactive instead of reactive, because I feel like this is reactive and it's vital, like, it is vital. I'm just wondering, you know, are there, you know, you're our new grants writer, so I'm just going to plug away, drop a little pixie dust over you to say, you know, are there grants out there that can help us fight this so that we don't ever have to administer any of these, that our children are educated on the destruction that this drug?
I can absolutely look into that, and, you know, speaking with the community, speaking with the Board of Ed about where there are gaps in their programming or issues that they've identified would definitely be something I'm interested in, so I can promise you I'll look into it.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions, Chairman?
No.
Thank you so much. It was such a pleasure meeting you.
Thank you, it was a pleasure to meet you guys as well.
Any other discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed?
Any opposed? Thank you. I don't know what is wrong with me. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Communication B from Chief Perno on the West Haven Police regarding animal shelter donations. I'd like to bring this out favorably.
Second.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Thank you, Councilwoman. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. I have Communication C from Chairman Massaro regarding a request for an interdepartmental transfer of funds. I'd like to bring this out favorably.
Second.
Thank you, thank you. Any discussion? Chairman, do you want to say something?
Your committee's all set? This here is the money that we have in our budget that we had aside for attorney fees, and this certain project is not going to be done at this time, so we decided to take that money and transfer it to have Livestream for the city. So this will cover, until the money runs out. When the money runs out, that's the end of Livestream, until our new budget starts. So if the money runs out before our new budget, then we'll have to find or do without it right now. So that's why we did this transfer. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Do you know, is there any movement on outfitting the rooms with? I know.
That will come up under the ARPA meeting we have, because I came up with another idea.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. As regards to finance updates, Mr. Jackson isn't here, but I know we, Lee and is here. Do we have any questions regarding the budget?
No.
Lee, I do have something I'd like to discuss in regards to the budget, so if you or Mr. Sprier would like to take a note for me to go back to Mr. Jackson, I would greatly appreciate it.
Of course, go ahead.
I understand that we've been unable to fill the position in the IT department, and I think it's gone back out to, the job posting is there.
Okay.
But I also understand that we, as the City Council, put money aside to bring live streaming and wiring of the rooms, and I'm not educated on all the correct terms, but the money is there. And my hope is, is that, can you tell me, Mr. Sprier, how much money that was?
So the money's not there right now? It's in our bonding package?
It's in our bonding package, thank you.
So we're going to be bonding again in February or March, so it'll be in our February-March bonding package. But there are two candidates for that, Network Security Engineer. One offer has been made, and they're awaiting a response, and if not, we are going to hire a consultant to do the work.
That was exactly, actually, I don't even have to say what I was going to say. I appreciate you, Mr. Sprier. You read my mind. That is exactly what I was going to ask. Oh, so can I ask another, so we could go straight to ARPA? I have another question on the ARPA. I know Mr. Carney's not here, and I don't know, Chairman, if you want to take this back to the ARPA Committee?
I'll answer what I can, if I know.
So, I would been doing some reflection. I reflect on things, and I was, I'm not sure who brought it up, one of the residents brought up as far as Public Works and their manpower, right? So it is my understanding, and maybe I'm wrong, it is our understanding that Public Works is understaffed. So when the Chair, Commissioner, Chairman of the ARPA Committee was here, Ken Carney, he was talking about paying Public Works to clean out the coverts and do that work. And I just didn't understand how that was going to happen, because they were so understaffed. Now I was thinking, was that, could the question be that, and I'm not sure how, if I'm going to explain this right, is he looking to say that when Frank goes out and cleans the coverts, that that hourly wage, the three hours in which he did that work, we can somehow bill the ARPA money for that, which then doesn't use his budgeted salary? Because it wouldn't use his regularly, regular salary income for that.
I don't know the, I don't know the exact answer to that. My, my underst- My, my understanding was that paying municipal employees, even if we had to pay them time and a half, is less expensive than paying contractors to do the work themselves.
Correct. And, and, but, and I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I, I think our struggle is, is that if they are understaffed, time and a half to do their regular, that's what we're saying, is that they're understaffed, so they're already working time and a half to get their regular duties done, how do we figure that out for the, the extra stuff? So that's what I was just kind of trying to figure out, you know, is it, could we hire temporary employment? Or, or is Public Works, you know, do they, have they posted job openings and are they going to be backfilling? Because I think that's where, I think was the misunderstanding, right? I mean, I don't want to speak out of turn for everybody, is that they are severely understaffed and are already working above and beyond. So I guess that's what I was just wondering, if that's what they were looking to do, to kind of save some of, use some of the ARPA money in their, for their salary line item, which would free up some additional money on that end by billing it to ARPA. Not that that's wrong or right, I was just curious if that was something.
ARPA can't be used to supplement budgeted items, salaries, so.
Okay.
So that would be, that would be a no.
Right.
You can't say I budgeted $10,000 in salary for this job, but I'm going to pay it out of the ARPA funds and save your salaries. That's, that's a non-use of ARPA funds.
Got it. I was just making sure that that wasn't the ask. Councilwoman?
Thank you. This isn't necessarily for you.
Okay.
We're under ARPA, right?
Yes.
Ken's out of town, that's why, I'm sorry, he's not here tonight, so.
Um, so I would really like to consider, and whether it be Chairwoman Hoski or Chairman Masaro, that we schedule a ARPA meeting, um, for the council. Uh, my desire would be to utilize monies from ARPA to fund a video and audio system in this room and the Harriet North Room. So in the category of things move slowly in the city of West Haven, I'd just like to share, as I was cleaning out some papers, the agenda from January 26, 2015. One of the communications was from Councilman Quagliani regarding regular videotaping, audiotaping, and televising of City Council meetings and availability of online, um, meetings. So it's seven years later and we still haven't outfitted these rooms with the appropriate audio and video systems. So I would like to have an ARPA meeting to not only discuss that, but I personally think that we should take a hard look at what capital items we have in our bonding request and, and potentially have a spirited discussion on whether some of those could be moved to ARPA. Because at the end of the day, we're going to be looking for savings for this community. And I think one of the ways to do that is if we bond less, we pay less. So I think, um, you know, if we could, if we could have that discussion at a future meeting, I would appreciate it, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
I, I, I couldn't agree more because I don't want my grandchildren paying for video on a bond. And, and I know, I'm just worried that every time we do that, they backfill that money with something else. So we don't really ever, and I'm not saying we're going to do it, but I just think that we have to look at that, you know, we take something out, but like, oh, well, that's, it's free now, so we can just add something else in there that we, there's this continuous cycle. And I, and, and I know, I mean, we've had these conversations.
It's on us to decide that, right?
Right, it's, it's been a lot, so.
Our bonding package, I mean, that's part of our five-year plan that you guys approved. So that's, our bonding package is, well, five-year plan that you've seen, um, yeah, the bonding package is a static, uh, you know, animal that can be changed anytime.
Right.
If, if you're, it's under your purview that, uh, the use of ARPA funds rather than bonding, which I think everyone in the Finance Department might agree with you as well, um, better pay for it now with free money rather than take on debt to do it. So, uh, yeah, that's, I mean, we, we have a baseline budget for that, um, audio/video system for this room, Harriet North, and for the third-floor conference room of about And we have $200,000 in the bond package earmarked for it, so. If that's something you want to do, we can send that out to bid right away. You're looking at a four- to five-month lead time on supplies right now anyway, so it's, it's, get it done now.
If we had that discussion in 2015, we would have, it would have been up.
Absolutely.
Couldn't we just add it, vote to add it to the agenda now and vote on it?
I'd rather have it collectively.
Any other, any other, um, questions in regards to ARPA? Anybody going once? Um, I do have one question. I know there was like a MARB meeting update.
Mm-hmm.
Have we, I know that MARB, I mentioned this, I think, to Lee two weeks ago, they mentioned about the ethics forms and disclosures of our vendors. Have we added that? Have we changed that?
So that's being added to all of our bids that go under MARB review now and ethics disclosure form by the vendor. Uh, we're retroactively, because we, we didn't include them in the past.
Right.
Uh, we're retroactively now before we enter into contract with anyone asking any vendor to sign an ethics disclosure form, an affidavit, non collusion ethics form affidavit. And I can get you a copy of that if you'd like to see it.
That would be great. And, and I guess, but, but what does happen? What if you're going into contract with somebody that discloses they're my great uncle Sal? Is it, like, what can really be?
It's not automatically disqualified.
Right, so I'm just wondering how, how, right, so I, I know that. And, and I'm just asking the questions just so we could educate the public. They disclose that they're related to somebody, you know, they're my great uncle Sal. What does that really mean and how, or do, do we even have an answer? Is there an answer for that?
It's not an easy answer. This, it's, it would be a matter of, you know, your great uncle Sal, if you were on the committee that helped hire your great uncle Sal, if, you know, you had a, a, a financial interest in your great uncle Sal's business. I mean, that's, there's a bunch of different, um, factors that would, would, would play into that, so.
And is, is that all written out somewhere and how you would, um?
How we would handle something like that?
Yes, like, do, do, is it, or is it kind of common sense?
It's kind of common sense. There's nothing in our charter that says, you know, you know, any, the, uh, relative of a, of a, you know, employee is, is exempt from doing business with the city. Um, but it is something that we would like disclosed beforehand and, um, you know, we're moving forward to that, to that, uh, mantra now, so.
No, I appreciate that. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Yes.
This is probably for Lee, but you may be able to answer it, Ricky.
I'll say, nah, I'll get him up.
So, so to follow on to that, so, um, I appreciate that the Ethics Commission is one commission that is active and meeting and fully staffed. And they've been doing some, I've been going to their meetings, um, and they've been doing some really good work. And I think their last meeting, uh, back maybe June, they passed a pretty meaty, um, ethics, draft ethics ordinance that was going to be presented to us for consideration, review, and approval. And I just don't know where that is at this point. Would you know, Mr. Ternan, where that is?
Yeah, I'm sorry, I would have to check with Chairman Varga myself. I'm not sure.
Yeah, I mean, they, they did a lot, they did a lot of work. It was a lot of good work. Um, you know, the only thing we have right now is the, the paragraph in the, in the City Charter. So, so this definitely enhances that. So, yeah, if you could, if you could check. Because I know they passed it to send it over to us so we could, you know, as a form of an ordinance, so we could have it on our agenda, so.
Very good.
Thank you.
Councilwoman?
Yeah. I just wanted to make a comment. Um, a lot of people have called and asked me why the Subcommittee, the MARB Subcommittee, was canceled. And the reason it was canceled was because there was no action items that the Subcommittee needed to work on. That's why it was canceled. Nothing bad, nothing crazies going on. There was just nothing for them to do this month. And we will, and I will be going to the next meeting in November.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Lee, um, can you please come up and give us your update on the police pension? I appreciate the work you did in two weeks.
Yeah, so I shared with your Chair, uh, prior to the meeting, um, the following update that I'll give you. Um, what we have narrowed to is we, and some stuff I can't discuss because part of this is, um, negotiation with the police union because it is going to be a pension item. But I will share what I feel I can share. And that is that, um, we are going to narrow it to trying to design a plan similar to what, um, is happening in North Haven and Stratford, which would, uh, continue to fund and to continue to have, uh, the social security deduction and payment, the 401K, uh, contribution and payment, um, but have a, um, set amount, um, defined benefit amount that wouldn't be subject to the market for the police. Uh, we have contacted with Robinson Cole and they have indicated, and I will have for your next meeting, according to them, a written opinion that we, that can be made part of. Doesn't have to be separate, it will be made part of the existing pension plan, assuming the police union agrees in negotiations. And, uh, the actuarial that we talked about at Milliman so often has provided me, uh, maybe to her detriment, uh, but provided me with an email that, uh, says in writing that I will have the numbers, uh, concerning how much this will cost in three different year, uh, reviews. Um, and she's supposed to get that to me by Friday, the 28th. And if that happens, I will try to make sure that I can make it an agenda item for your next meeting so that you can review it and decide what you want to do with it. But I, we, the only thing holding it up then though would be the negotiations. I can't bring it forward to you if negotiations aren't completed, but I would anticipate those might go quickly.
And we would, anything that was decided, just so that, um, everyone is aware, even if the negotiations are settled, the union votes on it, the City Council approves it, we still need MARB's approval to move forward.
We are preparing it as such, yes. So we would be prepared in a way to show, uh, what would be, uh, we think the significant question to MARB, which is not just, um, improving retention, but also the cost going on into the future.
Okay. Any questions? I'm not sure what, um, he can actually answer, Chairman.
Will this be a separate contract into regular contract or will this be in their contract?
Robinson Cole says we can make this part of and would, uh, have at its conclusion one pension benefit contract. So it would be incorporated into the existing pension benefit contract. You have one pension committee, uh, and that would be the intent.
Anyone else? Well, I just want to thank you, Lee, that, you know, you were good to your word from two weeks ago. So I look forward to two weeks, three weeks? What did you say? It's hearing an update in three weeks because.
Is it three?
It is three, so you have more time to get all your ducks in a row and.
I'll take three.
I know. But I really do appreciate it. Um, this has been on my mind for a really long time, so I appreciate you doing all of this in the last two weeks. Thank you.
Very good.
And your Committee on Finance is now closed at 7:54. Three.
Now, Councilwoman Hoski, and I will take you to Councilwoman O'Connor.
Thank you, Chairman. The time is now 7:53. Committee on Public Lands is now in session. Members present are Councilman Quagliani, Councilwoman O'Connor, Councilwoman Hamilton, Councilman Bruno, myself, acting as Chair. Tonight we have before us Communication E from Lee Ternan. Corporation Council requests approval to construct a new promenade to be located at 6 Rock Street to be paid for by the new developer of 6 Rock Street in accordance with City Code Section 206-2. I'd like to make a motion to bring this out favorably.
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Hi.
Yep.
I had a question. Um. The develop.
Probably, Lee, it's either.
Yeah, the developer of 6 Rock Street is going to pay for the quest. Now, what happens if the brewery doesn't go in?
It's designed that.
Because we're doing the promenade now, correct?
Yeah, it's designed that the construction would occur simultaneous with the issuance of the building permit.
Okay. That was, that's what I thought I read, but I wanted to make sure that was correct.
And this also helps with, uh, it checks another box on their financing package. So that you, all the Ts are crossed and all the Is are dotted. Uh, the City Code does not release city from city property that I can see, so being overly cautious, that's why it's before you.
Thank you. That was the question I had.
Any other question? Yep.
Lee, are there any updates on the, um, the appeals?
Like dates established or what's the timeframe we should be looking at for maybe something to happen regarding appeals, hearing of appeals?
Yes, pursuant to the, uh, insistence and encouragement of the City Council, there have been talks, which I won't disclose, um, between, um, certain parties relative to that litigation. And there'll probably be more to report, uh, at your next meeting. But the, uh, timing of the appeals, um, I mean, I will, I will check with Council. I mean, Council's first question to me, you know, they'll want to know certain things in terms of, um, you know, whether issues settle or not with any case. So, um, having those other discussions are very important. But those discussions, I can tell you, have been ongoing with the city, the developer, and, uh, parties who are relevant to what you described.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else, do you have any questions? All right, see none? One in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Pass you.
Passes unanimously. Next, we have Communication, uh, B from October 11th, 2022 Agenda. We are holding that in committee.
Can I make a motion to have that withdrawn? Is there such a thing? Or we're, we're not going to act on this, is that correct?
That is correct. Yeah, we can. Anyone second that?
Second.
Any discussion on that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion passes. So that is now off the books. Thank you, Chairman. I mean, uh, Councilwoman. Uh, we also have before us Communication G from August 22nd, 2022, uh, about 25 Herman Street. That is being held in committee as well until the procedure actually catches up with itself. So, uh, we'll be holding that as well. And with that, the Committee on Public Works is now closed at 7:57.
Public Lands.
Public Lands, what did I say?
Public Works.
Public Works.
It's fine.
Public Lands. It's all public.
Any adoption ordinances in previous presented? See none? Council ladies on reports?
Uh, no, we're at, uh, yeah. We skipped a page.
Where did I skip a page?
So we went right past unfinished business.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're on the back, that's why.
That's right.
Double-sided it. Not your fault.
You actually did it yourself. Any unfinished business?
Yeah, I have something.
Chairman, if you don't mind. So I appreciate, I think the corp counsel, which I don't, I know Ricky's here, but that's okay. Um, he had come to us in the past, I think last meeting, telling us that the city has actively begun, um, blight fines for the, the, the Haven property. I fully support that, um, being such that I would like to make a motion that the council does, does, um, support and expect that the blight fines for that particular property be issued on all, on all facets of that property that is defined as blight and that, um, the council get a monthly report of all the fines, the monetary fines that were issued.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussions? I agree 100%.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, now it's, uh, committee reports. Cork will read the Communication A.
We have Communication A from the Tax Collector regarding overpayment refunds for October 22, which will be filed with tonight's minutes.
Thank you. And now we go in committee, the committee reports. And we'll start with the finance. Councilwoman Haskins.
Thank you, Chairman. We have Communication D to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven. Your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of the animal shelter donations, reports that the committee met on the 24th day of October in 2022 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolve, the West Haven Police Department has received the following donations, totaling $480 for the animal shelter, per Connecticut statute 7-148C, 3A and B, and general order 98-04. We are forwarding these donations for approval. The City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the animal shelter donations to be deposited into the animal shelter donation account, number 10100000-28285. Maureen Gorman and $75, Madeline Carponi, $20, Barbara Brown, $20, $25, Laura Bros, $100, Angela Russo, $100, Mary L. Connors, $100, Barbara Brown, $10, Norman Goodman, $25, Savin Green Estates Condominium Association Incorporated, $25.
Thank you, Councilwoman Haskins. She read, I have a motion?
Give me a second.
Second?
Second by Donovan.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of Peter Massaro, Chairman, City Council, interdepartment line item transfers, reports that the committee met on the 24th day of October 2022 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolve, the City Council of the City of West Haven hereby approves the following interdepartment line item transfer, line item 11000010-52430, legal services decreased by $25,000. Line item 11000010-52770, other contractual services increased $25,000.
Councilwoman Haskins, ready? Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
To the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven, your committee on finance, to whom was referred the matter of Joe Soder, Director of Emergency Management, regarding the 2022 Emergency Management Department overdose program, reports that the committee met on the 24th day of October 2022 to consider said matter. It is unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Resolve, whereas the city is the recipient of cer- certain opioid legal settlement funds hereinafter, were to, referred to as opioid funds, whereas the mayor has submitted to the council a spending plan for the expenditure of the 2022 allotment of opioid funds, whereas the city council has fiscal responsibility for the appropriation of the funds under Section 4 of the city charter entitled Supplemental Appropriation, whereas the mayor and her administration have executive duties for administering said funds, including but not limited to purchasing requirements of Chapter 42 of the Code of the City of West Haven attached hereto for reference. Whereas this resolution, it is intended to supersede or replace any previous resolutions made on the same subject. Resolve, the city council hereby appropriates funding for the following project, 2022 Emergency Management Department overdose for pers- overdose response program. Funds are appropriated for the purchase of first aid supplies and training of school personnel for the immediate intervention of accidental drug overdose in a public awareness campaign. Approved funding of $19,446.56. Further resolve, that Nancy R. Rossi as the mayor of the City of West Haven shall, A, institute a program operated by the emergency management director to train and equip the schools to manage accidental drug overdose response, provide expense accounting reports to the city council for oversight and monitoring, C, that all project cost overruns shall be approved by the city council before costs are incurred, D, that all project surplus be returned to the opioid fund for further action by the city council, E, that the council reserves the balance of funds, $2,806.45 for future funding requests. Further resolve, Nancy R. Rossi as mayor of the City of West Haven is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents related to this resolution on behalf of the City of West Haven, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including but not limited to executing, delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Haskins just gave read about the opioid, uh, educational program. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
That's all that we have for the finance committee.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Donovan, you're next.
I have to do the timing again? We have before us Communication E to the Honorable City Council of the City of West Haven. Your committee on public lands, to whom was referred the matter of approval to construct a new promenade at Six Rock Street to be paid for by the new developer of Six Rock Street in accordance with City Code Section 206 dash two. Reports that the committee met on the 24th day of October 2022 to consider said matter. It is the unanimous opinion of the committee that the following motion be presented. Whereas the City of West Haven seeks private assistance to monetize the city-owned parcel known as Parcel L or Six Rock Street, whereas the City of West Haven desires to retain ownership of Parcel L or Six Rock Street. Whereas the City Council of the City of West Haven approved the, uh, execution of ground lease contracts between the City of West Haven and Rock Street Brewery, LLC for development of Six Rock Street. Whereas the City Council favors a beachfront walking promenade at the parcel known as Parcel L or Six Rock Street, now therefore to be resolved. Resolve, the city finds that public necessity and convenience require the construction of new promenade slash, uh, pedestrian walkway at the location of the new brewery or Six Rock Street Parcel L in the area of the parcel depicted in the property description and survey identified in Schedule A attached hereto and accord, incorporated by reference as part of this resolution. The City Council further resolves that, at the moment, the Six Rock, uh, Sixth Street, the Rock Street Brewery, sorry, LLC, has issued a building permit for construction of a new brewery, the new promenade be constructed. The City Council further resolves that the new promenade will be constructed in compliance with the design criteria similar to the design of the existing promenade between David A. Alshuler Plaza and Washington Avenue, and all construction costs will be paid by the Rock Street Brewery, LLC or the developer of the parcel.
Thank you, Councilwoman Donovan. Councilwoman Donovan just read for the new promenade. Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any discussion? Any abstentions? Motion passes.
Opposed? Point of order, Chairman?
Oh.
Any opposed?
I know, I'm sorry, I'm opposed. You're opposed, you're opposed. None opposed. Motion passes.
And that's all I have for publishing.
Communication B withdrawing, and G.
G was held.
G was held, oh, sorry.
Okay. Again, adoptions for ordinances in previous presented? Any?
None.
Council ladies on reports?
None.
I have one.
Oh, I have one.
Tomorrow night, planning and zoning, uh, has on their agenda the, um, request for Starbucks to move from their existing location to the old Stewart's next door, and also the discussion of the state requirement that the, uh, communities take up these ADUs, adult dwelling units, which I won't opine on, my personal opinion, but that's, that's on their agenda as well, that either the city has to either, either, um, come onto the state plan, or they have to develop a plan of their own. So, that's in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission tomorrow at 6 o'clock. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anybody else? On the new business, uh, I have something. November 2nd, 6 o'clock, for an offer meeting? Is that good? November 2nd? At 6:00 PM? I figured that.
Unfortunate.
Is that good?
I won't be there either.
All right. Okay. So, November 2nd, we'll have a, we'll have an offer meeting.
Okay.
Favorit's worse. Motion adjourned? Well. Offer meeting.
We're on new business.
We're on new business, I'm done.
All right, so I thought you went, you went, I just wanted to go myself. Um, so I just wanted to, um, I keep saying, um, I had a, I had a meeting at the high school with the Fab, it's Fill a Bag, Fuel a Mind program reestablishing. And in that conversation, I learned that, um, the, um, their food closet was empty. So, I just want to give a public thank you to, um, Vertical Church and Our Lady of Victory. We made a phone call out to them, and within two days, they came, um, you know, the Board of Ed hasn't been able to get the ARPA money yet to, you know, start buying supplies. So, they came in and filled it, and, um, I got, um, feedback back that there was actually a student who they saw, because, you know, there's cameras all over the school, and you saw this student walking down from Kelsey Avenue, coming and knocking on the door, asking the security guard if they could come in and get food out of the, um, food pantry that they have. And he got, you know, two boxes of whatever it was, and some vegetables, and then took it, and they watched him walk. So, I mean, to just say that, you know, that literally instantly made a difference in the life of a family in, um, West Haven, and how vital it is that, you know, we get that money distributed. So, I'm just curious, um, you know, we're not meeting for another three weeks, so, um, Ken Carney won't be back by then, but maybe you could reach out to him, Chairman, and just find out, like, how we can start getting those funds out there to the school, or what they're actually going to do. I mean, if the school needs more food, I'm sure Vertical Church and Our Lady of Victory will help again, but it's, you know. Oh, we can discuss it. Oh, okay. Yes, didn't even think of that. All right, thank you. I'm done.
Motion adjourned?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.